Good evening and welcome to the Town Board meeting. It is October 14th, 2014. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome and thank you for attending this meeting and for listening to us about the meeting on Panda. Thank you for Panda for coming and for reporters for coming. Thank you, Hank. We're going to forego the supervisor's report tonight because we've been so engaged with the budget, as we usually are in the month of October, that we delay the report for the month of September until the last meeting in October, which will be the 22nd. So, I'll be giving the supervisor's report on the 22nd of October this month. The clerk has a report?
I do. September 1st through September 30th, 2014. Total local shares remitted to supervisor for town revenue, $1,913.51. Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for the spade and nude program, $80. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $247.50. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $7,166.74. For total state, county, and local revenue of $9,407.75. And that's it. Pursuant to Section 27, Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sumacan Town Clerk of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We'll start with announcements. If anyone has any announcements, you can see that Councilman Ross is not with us tonight. So, I'll start. Bill O'Neill, do you have any announcements?
No.
Okay. Harry?
No.
Okay. Sue, how about you?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And Brenda?
Just one announcement about the Rebuilding Together Duchess County applications being due. That's the group that helps folks who need some extra help do their home repairs. And the deadline for applications is October 31st, and the repairs will be done in April. There's an income qualification, so if you need some extra help and you think you might qualify, call 845-454-7310, or you can go to www.rebuildingtogetherduchess.org.
Thank you, Brenda. You're welcome. And I have a couple of announcements. One is to remind everyone that November 11th is Veterans Day, and because it is the second Tuesday of the month, we will not be meeting on the 11th. We will be meeting on the day before, Monday, the 10th. So, the Town Board meeting will be rescheduled to Monday, November 10th, same time, same place, 7:30. Tomorrow, oh, and while I'm on that subject of Veterans Day, I wanted to remind the public, and we'll try to do it again at the next meeting, that every November 11th, Red Hook VFW sponsors a wonderful Veterans Day celebration, although it's not at 11:00 a.m. as some of them traditionally are. It's a beautiful ceremony in the Red Hook Village Memorial Park on North Broadway in Red Hook at 7:00. And I hope as many people as can will come. It's very inspiring and moving, and it's always nice to be part of that ceremony of gratefulness to all of those veterans. We have a great honor to have among us, not tonight, but he is one of us, Red Hook Rotary Citizen of the Year, who is our own Doug Strawinski. Doug has been our Rec Commission Chairperson and member of the Rec Commission for quite some time, but chairman of the commission for many years. And he has been a friend to the Town Hall family for longer than, well, not longer than I've been here, but that's hard to do, isn't it? He's been a member and a friend to the Town Hall family for many, many years, and we're very, very happy for Doug. He quietly goes about his volunteerism. He doesn't draw attention to himself. He's always there when we need him, and we have, on numerous occasions, needed his skills to help us here at Town Hall, and he willingly and readily volunteers to help us. And I couldn't be more pleased. He's a lovely guy. The dinner is taking place at the Red Hook Firehouse Community Room, October 21st. That's a Tuesday. And tickets are on sale. I believe the town clerk has tickets available. And it's a good, fun evening, and no one is more worthy, so I commend it to you. Doug Strawinski, Tuesday, October 21st, starting at 6:15. Dinner served at 7:00, and it's a good one. Tomorrow, Duchess County is sponsoring what's called a Shared Services Summit at the Poughkeepsie Grand Hotel, where there will be discussion about shared services, the importance of shared services, the work that's being done countywide to achieve shared services. And there will be, starting with a panel discussion of various topics and people of expertise, including Dr. Jerry Benjamin, Stephen Aquarrio, I knew I would mess that one up. He's the Executive Director of New York State Association of Counties. Mark Patterson is the Director of Local Government Services, New York State Department of State, Division of Local Government Services. And Jonathan Dropkin, who is the President and CEO of Hudson Valley Patterin for Progress. Following an hour of, excuse me, an hour of that panel session discussing the issues of shared services and their value, there will be workshops from 6:00 to 6:45 and from 6:45 to 7:30, in which there will be discussions on public safety and emergency. Services is one. Highway community planning and infrastructure is another. And IT and central services is the third. So, and they close with dinner for those who are interested in staying. It requires registration. I will be going, and I believe, Harry, you think you will go as well.
I'm planning on.
And that's good. Harry's worked very hard for Shared Services Highway. And Teresa, would you like to join us?
I won't be able to go tomorrow.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. You've added a lot to that effort that we've had with the two villages, and I appreciate it. Thank you. So, that's tomorrow, and we've talked about Veterans Day. It will be celebrated at Duchess County, November 1st, at the Henry Wallace FDR Presidential Library. And they're going to have a Veterans Appreciation Day, November 1st, Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00. I wanted to remind everyone that the Crop Walk is still being subscribed to. If you would like to sponsor someone, it will take off at St. Christopher's Church in Red Hook on Benner Road, October 26th, 12:30. And the donations from the Crop Walk will benefit five local food pantries and Hunger Relief Worldwide. It's sponsored by the Red Hook Council of Churches and Church World Organizations. I'm sorry, Church World Service. This, I don't see it here, but this must be, I don't know how many years, a lot of years they've been raising money to prevent hunger and help local organizations that provide food to people in need. And if you wish to know who to contact for donating, contribution to that, you can call me at 758-4622, and I will let you know who some of the walkers at Crop Walk will be. They would be glad to accept the donations. Finally, I have a letter. This could go under correspondence, but I really want to put it up front because I think it's important. I received a letter from a group called Community Coalition for Montgomery Place, and it goes thus. "We, the signatory organizations and entities, are committed to the preservation of Montgomery Place, a national historic landmark and must-see site in the Hudson River Valley National Heritage Area. Montgomery Place is an indispensable historic treasure. A rare Hudson River estate surviving from the early post-revolutionary period, it embodies many phases of the settlement and cultural development of this region. Built by one of the leading families of the valley as a monument to an important Revolutionary War hero, it has been well-preserved, complete with furnishings and art, by several generations of that family. Montgomery Place is a living museum. The buildings and surrounding grounds offer supreme examples of 19th-century architecture and romantic landscape design, and provide an intimate and thoroughly documented perspective of valley life of the era. The historic orchards and working farm which remain in profitable operation make available hands-on educational experiences for local schoolchildren. Montgomery Place is a valuable ecological resource. Its 300-year-old woods represent perhaps the last of the uncut forests that once lined the Hudson River. The adjoining estuarian lands comprise a portion of the most important fresh tidal sanctuary in New York State. Montgomery Place can again become an important economic engine. When fully open to the public, Montgomery Place is a magnet for tourism that, in collaboration with other historic properties in the region, significantly enhances the local economy. We were disappointed by the decision of Historic Hudson Valley in 2005, essentially to close Montgomery Place as a public amenity, and are deeply concerned over conflicting information as to Historic Hudson Valley's long-term intentions for this property. We are committed to working to perpetuate the integrity and character of Montgomery Place as a vibrant historical and educational resource available to scholars, tourists, and the community at large. We call upon HHV to preserve, maintain, promote, and exhibit Montgomery Place, and specifically to affirm that, number one, Montgomery Place will not be sold to a private party nor to any organization not committed to its preservation and public access. Number two, Montgomery Place's collection of art and furnishings will be kept intact and on location. And number three, Montgomery Place will be open to the public in a meaningful way, including, at a minimum, a full season of summer and autumn weekends and seasonal access for group tours seven days a week. We look forward to cooperating constructively and enthusiastically with all who share these objectives, and thereby make Montgomery Place, once again, the central jewel in the emerald neck of the Hudson Valley, open to and beloved by all." The Community Coalition's Chair is Jay Dennis Delafield. Its members are Hudson River Heritage, Edgar Benson Society, Wilderstein Preservation, Friends of Claremont, Duchess County Tourism Committee, Duchess County Economic Development Board, Calvee Voe Preservation Alliance, Hudson Valley Lodging Association, Duchess County Historical Society, Reinbeck Historical Society, World Monuments Fund, Victorian Society in America, Columbia Land Conservancy, Friends of Elmendorf, Duchess County Agricultural Society, the Shaker Museum, St. Paul's Episcopal Church in Tivoli, and the Olana Partnership. The honorary members are Danny Delafield, Honorary Chair, Dr. Lucy Walewski, Richard H. Genret, John Dyson, Supervisor Sue Crane, Assemblyman Mark Bolinaro, and Sally Mazzarella. I remember when, five years ago, I wasn't prepared, is the best way to say it, I wasn't prepared for even the thought that Montgomery Place would be closed. It's been such an important, wonderful, historical site in the town of Red Hook, and many of us expressed very strongly how much we supported that site and its history and our right to retain it, and we were very fortunate at the time to have some private donors come forward to see that it would stay open and maintain the life that it had for the community in at least a partial way during the seasons of the summer and fall. There's great concern that there is yet an effort to close Montgomery Place, sell off the contents, sell the property, and I'm hoping that this Town Board and anyone within earshot who cares about the history of the Hudson Valley will be willing to cooperate to help in whatever way we can to make sure that that house, that beautiful home, and the grounds, and everything that it represents can be saved. So, I will keep you informed, but that was received, I believe we received that just today. There has been rumor that things are going in the wrong direction there in terms of the governing body of Historic Hudson Valley, in terms of its support for that particular historic home. And I hope those rumors are not correct, but I know that the county exec is committed. I am committed, and I'm sure this board will support keeping Montgomery Place a public entity and available and open to the public. So, is there any public comment before we open the meeting? Hearing none. We'll start with what has consumed many of us for some weeks, and that is the 2015 budget. We are obliged to set a public hearing for the budget so that the public may come. We will present the budget formally to the public. It is on file essentially now with the town clerk, and it is in preliminary form. The Town Board has worked on it, and we feel that it's a good budget. We feel that we have done a reasonable job in meeting the needs that the town has, in spite of the difficulties that come down from us in terms of mandates from New York State and elsewhere, and in spite of the revenues that we enjoyed for so many years that seem to be drying up as each year passes, and more pressure is being brought on us by the New York State Comptroller's Office to reduce budgets in every way that we can. And I think you all know that I believe we can reduce just so far before real damage is done to a community. I think that with Rose Ryder's help, as the Budget Officer, who has met with all of the departments and the committee chairs to try to get a grip on any ways at all that we can save money, we've done an admirable job of looking at each department and seeing if there are savings. Where are they, and should we make adjustments? We have made some adjustments, and some of them have been painful, some of them have been, not only to us but to also employees. You know, in a small group like this, the department heads, each are loyal to their own department. They know their work. They don't have to be told day after day what to do. They know what they're doing. And it's very hard to come to budget time and not reward them as we would like to do. But they understand that we have constraints, and I believe, although they know that they are the best department head in the place, nevertheless, they accept that they aren't going to get the increases that they perhaps deserve. And this board has worked very hard to balance appreciation for the town workers, the town employees, with the constraints that are facing us, not only this year, but next year and the year thereafter. We can see down the road, because it's made very plain to us from the Comptroller's Office, what we as municipal leaders are expected to do. It will not get easier. It's only going to get tougher, and we have to be prepared for that. But I believe we have a good group of people who know how to plan, which is such an amazing, not only opportunity but privilege, to be working here with this group of people. And I'm eternally grateful to department heads, and as I said, Rose Ryder, and to Deb Marks, who has stayed on in a part-time capacity to help Ann Conway, who is now the bookkeeper and the person par excellence about budgets. And Ann, I want to thank you for hanging in there with us. You came into this only a month or so before we started preparing the budget, and bless you. You and Debbie have managed to communicate with each other, and I bet you are ready to go next year without a whole lot of help, and we're very grateful to you. You have a wonderful, calm demeanor, and it's been a great pleasure to have you to work with. Thank you. So, we have in your packet the Town Board 2015 Preliminary Budget, and I think we feel that it's a good budget, and we are satisfied with it to go to public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. So, I would like to propose then that we do just that, that we set a public hearing for this budget for the next meeting, October 22nd. It's a Wednesday, at which time we will visually show the budget. We'll probably do some graphics. We'll probably have a few people who are interested in learning more about the budget. I don't think there's anything in it that will come as a surprise, knowing the way that the municipalities locally have all been very vocal in the press about how much pressure is on us as the smallest entities of the towns, counties, state, and federal. We seem to be the ones that have a lot of pressure, especially this time of year. So, I would like to move that we set the public hearing for, shall we say, 7:45 on the 22nd?
And you can get your publications in Friday?
I'm sorry?
Publications, so you can get the publication in at any time?
Oh, yeah. Well, we can get the publication in by the end of this week, yes?
Sure.
And, yeah, it has to be in five days in advance, right? Yeah. So, maybe we can take care of that tomorrow. We'll look at that together and see what...
And Sue, I'll miss that public hearing.
Okay. Well, we'll miss you.
You know how I feel about the budget.
We'll miss you, and thank you for your support of the budget, Brenda, and everything that we've done for it. So, I make that motion, or resolution, to set the public hearing for October 22nd at 7:45. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, that will allow us time to meet the schedule that is set forth by the state. We may not, after we have that public hearing, we can change the budget. We can change the budget up until, but not beyond, November 15th, but we may not change the proposed elected official salaries before Election Day. So, by Election Day, the salaries are set, and I think because we're going into public hearing with those salaries published, those will be the salaries. If at the public hearing we will hear comments, concerns, suggestions from the public, we may need to make modest adjustments to it. We believe we will meet the cap that has been required by the state this year, and it is certainly this board's goal to do so. So, that's what we have on the budget, and I thank you all for your work on it, for reviewing it, and for meeting several meetings to make sure that we had many eyes on it before we There is a resolution here. While we're doing resolutions...
Will the budget be on the website?
Do you publish the budget on the website?
Deputy used to send it to them.
Okay. So, we'll send you by email tomorrow, the preliminary budget? You did not receive that yet?
Via email? No.
Okay. Is that the format you want it in? You want it by email?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So, if you could send that out to Sue, she'll get it to the webmaster, and it'll be up for people to review. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Harry. So, oh, I was talking about another resolution, and it had to do with the water. We had a presentation by Hank Van Peres of the Water Department last time, and he asked us to, at some point, approve re-upping, renewing, the contract with VRI, which is the environmental service that operates our water district. And I don't have it. I know it was given to you. Do you mind reading that, Harry?
Sure. "Whereas the town of Red Hook has entered into a professional service agreement for water system operator for Water District 1 in the town of Red Hook dated July 1st, 2012, signed between the town and VRI Environmental Services of Millbrook, New York, with an annual fee of $20,160 and such other terms and conditions as specified therein, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. The advisory board, the Water District Advisory Board, has recommended that the town renew the current agreement for an additional one-year period effective January 1st of 2015 on the same terms and conditions as the current agreement. Whereas the renewal is determined to be in the best interests of the town and Water District Number 1, and therefore be resolved by the Town Board of the town of Red Hook as follows. Supervisor Sue Crane, in her absence Deputy Supervisor, is hereby authorized and directed to execute a one-year renewal of the professional services agreement, water system operator of Water District Number 1, with VRI Environmental Services, Inc., on the same terms and conditions set forth therein. Such agreement shall be approved by the officer executing such agreement consistent with the terms of the resolution." This resolution will take effect immediately, and I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, conversation about that resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. The next resolution has to do with authorizing commitment for New York State DOT highway work permit. And Bill, maybe you would read that. Did you find it in your package?
Whereas the town of Red Hook is required often to perform work...
Whereas the Town of Red Hook is required often to perform work in and around roadways owned and operated by the New York State Department of Transportation, specifically U.S. Route 9 in the Town of Red Hook. Whereas, the said agreement provides for the Town to defend, indemnify, and hold harmless the state of New York, its officers, et cetera, in conjunction with such work. And whereas the Town of Red Hook is authorized to enter into an agreement with the state DOT in connection with highway work permits periodically issued by the New York State DOT to the Town of Red Hook for work within the bounds of the state highway right-of-way. And whereas the agreement shall secure the Town's faithful performance with the terms of any permit issued by the New York State DOT, that's the Department of Transportation. The agreement shall also require the Town to defend, indemnify, hold harmless the state of New York, its officials, officers, agents, and employees for any damages arising out of the Town's operations conducted under a permit. And whereas the agreement shall apply to all highway work permits issued to the Town by the New York State DOT until the Town requests that it be canceled. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, that the Town Board is hereby authorizing said agreement and undertaking the administrative act necessary to effectuate the terms of said agreement. And I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I just want to note that this is in lieu of a bond for the DOT, for the purpose of securing permits. And so, we have recommended, and I think that for Teresa and Supervisor to just follow up, that make sure your insurance broker is aware of this agreement, so that they can provide adequate coverage.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Do you also have a truck surplus?
Not tonight.
Oh.
Truck surplus, we're not doing that tonight.
I sent, I thought you might email the...
You did, I wasn't sure we were doing it tonight, it, I just got it. You want to do it? You want to?
Yeah.
You want to talk about it for me?
And then, you can let me know if it's acceptable.
If you would. That would be great, Teresa, thank you.
This is a surplus equipment. The Town of Red Hook Highway Department has used 2001 Ford F-550, one-ton dump truck with plow. It has been deemed no longer of use to the Town and we are asking that it be declared a surplus. I've contacted Von Hogan at Ryan Beck Ford in order to determine the current value, which is around $4,500. After discussion with the Town purchaser Ted Hudson, and according to the condition, we believe that this is a fair purchase price and recommend that it be sold in and as-is condition on a municipal auction site. So, that is not the minimum bid that we would be asking for, that's around the value. The Town shall not warranty the condition. Also, the purchaser shall hold the Town of Red Hook harmless from any claims or injuries arising from the purchaser's operations or use of the vehicle or equipment. All items purchased shall have all Town of Red Hook markings, lettering, and decals removed prior to the pickup of the items. So, what we're asking for tonight is the ability to use an, of internet auction site for disposal of this item.
If that doesn't work, it'll be scrapped.
Right. So, if you have any questions, I was in touch with a couple of different auction people and the county, Dutchess County uses absolute auction and they will offer us the same terms that they have for the county. And we believe that it's something that the Town should try and see how it works out.
Now, is that going in with the county auction as one of its?
No, it would be a standalone.
Okay, it's a separate, standalone.
The county has had an auction.
Right, that's what I thought.
But this would be just a standalone item.
Okay.
And they would list it for us and they would collect the monies for it and they would send us the check. And a lot of other municipalities have had good luck with this type of sale and it reaches a huge audience, over 40,000 people are out there looking for surplus equipment.
This would be the first time you had tried to do this online?
Yes.
Sounds good. So, the value has been stated by a dealer at $4,500?
Well, it says the current value, but that is a very vague number, depending on the list of things that may be wrong with the truck and what you may be able to get. He also said that if you were offered a lower amount, and he gave me a specific amount, which I want to discuss with Ted, that that would be acceptable. You know, $4,500 is depending on, you know, the condition and who wants to buy it.
Okay, okay. Well, obviously you don't want to, you know, get into that in advance of the auction, but...
Right.
Okay, okay.
This would be a bidding process.
A bidding process. And you have the right to not sell the truck.
To set a minimum, minimum price.
If you feel that you're not getting the price that you want for it.
But once you enter it into the process, then?
Yeah.
You're committed to the process.
Yeah, but you can set a minimum price.
Correct.
Uh, minimum bid.
That's right.
It sounds good. So, we have before us authorizing the sale of surplus items of the Town of Red Hook. Brenda, would you mind reading that?
No, not at all. Whereas the Town of Red Hook Highway Superintendent has recommended the disposition of the surplus equipment described herein in the manner set forth herein. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook as follows. Number one, the Town Board hereby declares the following item as surplus equipment, which is to be sold at fair in as-is-where-is, as-is-where-is condition, in accordance with the procedures and on the terms and conditions set forth in this resolution, a 2001 Ford F-550, one-ton dump truck with plow. Number two, the purchasing agent is authorized to engage a reputable online auction agent approved by the purchasing officer at a commission not exceeding 10% for the online auction sale of the surplus equipment at a minimum bid and offering period to be determined by the purchasing officer. And upon completion of the close of bidding in accordance with the auction agent's procedures, such sale shall become final upon payment of the bid price to the Town. The surplus equipment shall be available for inspection at the Town Highway Department Red Hook, New York, pending sale at auction. Three, if no bids are received at the minimum bid, the purchasing agent is authorized to dispose of such property as scrap. And I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Teresa, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we now have the road highways, amended highway specifications task, and Chris has some handouts in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get her any of those. Good to hear. Are you sharing?
I have an extra one, I think, Harry.
So, what we distributed in advance, you recall that we previously, you adopted a resolution determining lead agency, you circulated a copy of that to the planning board and you referred the draft amendments to the highway specifications to county planning. And the planning board has returned comments. They reviewed the proposed highway specifications with respect to the Town's local waterfront revitalization plan and determined that it is consistent. And they, let's see, the planning board's comments were, let me see, they were in favor of approval. And you received comments from a matter of local concern with comments from the county planning. They had two comments, one of which was that they wanted to revise the street section illustrations so that they did not show conifers in the tree line. And Michelle will make that change. We don't have, we have a hand-marked correction so that what you're approving is without the conifers, but, you know, she will provide a corrected one, you know, later on for the final pretty version. But what you would be considering would not have the conifers in it. So, that change was accepted. There was another recommendation that the, the language be changed to refer to street standards instead of highway standards, but Michelle felt that to be consistent with the existing highway standards law, it just made sense to leave it as highway standards and then, you know. So, so that change was not accepted, but that's a comment, so. And so, you now have in front of you the next series of documents for consideration. And the first one would be a Part Two, which Michelle prepared, a full environmental assessment form, which we did circulate to you last week, so you've had a chance to look at that, which we can go through quickly. And then a full environmental assessment form, Part Three, evaluation of impact. And again, we, that was prepared by Michelle and circulated last week. So, with respect to the Part Two, in terms of impacts on land, geological features, surface water, groundwater flooding, air, plants and animals, agricultural resources, aesthetic resources, historic and archaeological resources, open space, critical environmental areas, transportation, energy, noise over and light, and human health, and community plans and community character, consistently, Michelle has checked that it will not have an impact. She has elaborated on that in a evaluation, which indicates that the proposed action would provide for suitable transportation facilities for vehicles while slowing traffic in residential neighborhoods and creating a safer environment for pedestrian and bicycle travel. The amendments may encourage alternative modes of transportation with a resulting decrease in vehicular traffic congestion. The proposed action is consistent with the transportation goals of the Town's adopted comprehensive plan to protect the rural character and scenic resources of the community by developing a road system that is sensitive to the historic and scenic resources of the community, to provide suitable transportation facilities and services to accommodate auto, pedestrian, and bicyclists' travel, to support the best possible design of all transportation facilities, to enhance the appearance of the community and certain local needs, and to provide a network of sidewalks for day-to-day pedestrian movement. No significant adverse environmental impacts on transportation will result from the proposed action. And then this is also a proposed action would reduce the width of rural suburban roads and roads in the TND Residential Neighborhood Sub-District. And the reduction in impervious surfaces will reduce in decreased stormwater runoff and pollutants. This is a beneficial impact on surface and groundwater resources. And so, that's the substance of that, which we all have a chance to look at. So, that is the part of the secret review. And then we also have a local waterfront revitalization program, consistent to determination, which this Town Board needs to review. The planning board reviewed the same schedule and, again, was prepared by Michelle as planner. And the schedule indicates that the reduction in impervious surfaces was a positive impact in terms of pollution and runoff. And she indicated that the narrower roads are consistent with the historic roads in the community and enhance the aesthetic and scenic character of the National Historic Landmark District. And those are the primary substantive comments. So, this is the first, let's see, so those are sort of background documents, if you will, and then what you have in front of you should be the resolution itself, which recites the procedures that you followed in considering the adoption of the highway specifications and amendments, including the proposal by the task force of the new standards, the development of a full environmental assessment form, the classification as Type One, declaration of lead agency, referral to Dutchess County, and the discussion of matter of local concern with comments, referral to the planning board, and also for their determination as to consistency. And then review by this Town Board at the EIA and the information provided, and consideration of the LWRP policy, standards, and conditions. And so, and also the consideration of the county planning comments and the planning board comments. So, the resolution, would you like me to read that part in full?
That would be wonderful.
So, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board hereby adopts the attached negative declaration, finding that the adoption of the amendments will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared and directs the clerk to send notice of adoption of a negative declaration to the environmental notice bulletin, PEC. And be it further resolved that the Town Board hereby determines that the adoption of the amendments is consistent with the Town's LWRP, that's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. And be it further resolved that the Town Board hereby adopts the attached amendment number one to the Town of Red Hook Highway Standards, and be it further resolved that the clerk is hereby directed to append amendment number one to the Town of Red Hook Highway Standards on file in her office and to send notice of such adoption to the Town Highway Superintendent.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Mm-hmm, second.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm tempted to say hallelujah.
Yeah, oh my, sound second down.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all, especially to those of you who have served so faithfully on the, on the inter-municipal task force that has reviewed and reviewed, I'm sure, and Christine for all your review, and to Teresa for your comments and patience throughout with this. I know it's...
And certainly Michelle for her...
And Michelle as well. And I'm sorry not to be able to thank Michelle in person. Okay. Now, just to close the loop, this now goes to the town clerk as a document that gets filed.
So, right, so it would be, what we ought to do is then she'll have an official, she has an official copy of the highway specifications and it needs to be, it really should be appended to that, you know, either it's, you know, punched in your book, stapled, whatever, so that what, from now on, that's part of the official copy of the highway specifications. And then, also, there's an AP notice that we can help you with tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good to hear. Thank you very much. Okay. I am happy to tell you that we completed the Community Development Block Grant application today. We made some modifications and we came under $105,000. We submitted it to Dutchess County Planning four days early. I can't even believe it myself, but it is complete. I believe they have everything they need for the complete application to be considered. And the amount of money that we are applying for is $99,430. So, that, I, I believe a copy of it is available if you wish, certainly in my office and, and we can send it to you online if you wish. But that went out today. And I guess we're really close to being finished. Does anyone have any correspondence? I, I have some. I have some regarding, I think this may be a, an agenda correspondence item. It, it is regarding an attorney's letter regarding the Feller estate.
Yes.
And the attorney is Thomas Bauer, who has indicated that, that an original copy of a real estate contract signed by all parties and approving changes made there too, and this letter will serve as confirmation that they have a deposit of $71,000 as a residential contract of sale. And the, the estate is Feller and the transfer is to McKeon. And the estate is Feller, and the transfer is to McKeon. And...
So, the, at the moment, this is just a correspondence for the board. The relevance is that we hold a conservation easement on this property. This is one of the properties, one of the first properties that you bought an interest in back when you first funded the program. And so, there is a provision in your conservation easements that if the property is sold, I mean certainly the property can be sold, you know, from one or to the next, and it remains subject to the conservation easement. There is a provision in those agreements that refers to a right of first refusal on the part of, it would be Scenic Hudson as the holder of the easement. We are a third party. But to essentially stick up their hand and purchase the property meet the price if they felt that that was necessary in the situation, that right of first refusal is only in place if the new owner is not going to continue to farm the property, essentially. So, Scenic Hudson is then in a position to make a judgment about that, take that information, and determine whether they would, oftentimes they'll be asked to, rather than simply wait the period, they'll be asked to exercise a, or execute a waiver of a right of first refusal. We haven't been asked to execute a waiver. If we are, we can come back and, you know, ask you to sign that. But in the meantime, this is for information.
So, we don't need to respond in any particular?
I don't think so at this point unless you had some particular objection to the situation or the particular fact situation that you saw in front of you. Otherwise, it's simply for your information so that you know that the property is being sold.
Just out of curiosity, what if, if there were a property that the town was invested in and it was sold, and it did not after the fact? We waive our right of first refusal objection. And the property owner, the new property owner does not continue to, is that a concern to us? Or is it Scenic Hudson or whoever the landlord is?
I mean, it's a concern to both, but I mean, the property is still subject to all of the terms and conditions of the conservation easement that do put restrictions on the use of the property. They put restrictions on the development of the property.
But what you said was that as long as the property is continuing to be farmed, but what if the property owner, who is the new owner, decides they're just going to let it grow up and be fallow and just be a forest?
Right, and that does sometimes happen.
Right.
And, and there is, you know, the provisions of, and I'd have to look at this particular one, because each one of these easements is somewhat different, but there are certain things in general.
I wasn't thinking about this one. I was thinking in general.
So, in general, there are specific permitted uses in these easements. Typically, agricultural improvements are permitted. Typically, maybe one-house development or something, depending on the particulars of what was allowed for that property. And some types of recreational, educational uses. There is, I'm not, I would not say that there's probably typically a requirement that someone actively managed the property in the way that, you know, you might see a forest easement, but there are, there are some restrictions in the property.
Okay, so it's case-by-case, probably?
It's case-by-case, and each of these easements is a little bit different.
Can we receive this?
So, but the right of first refusal doesn't apply to gifts or requests at all, and it doesn't apply to a sale of property to someone who, in the reasonable judgment of grantee, demonstrates and intend to conduct farming on the property, which is defined, so.
Well, Chris, would it be typical that a trail, a public trail, would be allowed on a conserved property?
No, public trails are very specifically provided, so you, some of the conservation easements that you might see would have a public trail easement, but that would be specifically called out. You might have a conservation easement on the bulk of the property, and then on a certain area, you might see a public trail portion of that easement. So, in general, there isn't a right, for these farm easements, generally, there's not a right for the public to access the property. That's not something that's been valued as a part of the purchase. And when there is a public trail easement included, that's part of the value of how much is the homeowner, I mean, the property owner giving up in value when that value is determined. So, obviously, you know, that has an impact on how that's valued.
Value.
Right. Yeah. So, each, really, each of these conservation easements is somewhat different. They're very tailored to the type of land, you know, are there wetlands? What is it, what is the conservation value that you're trying to preserve in making the investment of the conservation easement?
Of course, it always comes to mind that, that we don't know what future town boards twenty years from now are going to want to consider. So, it's going to be a legal matter and a negotiation between landowners and Scenic Hudson and the then-town board if there are to be changes made in how that easement is viewed.
Well, there's only, there's, I mean, but there's, there's limited parameters for that, because the purpose of the easement is to establish in perpetuity the relationship between the parties. And, I mean, there's, there are some things where there's a, you know, permission provisions, if you will, but the, in general, the basic substance of the provisions are intended to be set at the beginning because, you know, that's, that's the reason for setting the values the way that you do. You know, it's not something that you go back later and renegotiate.
I've said, I'm of the opinion, or had been of the opinion, that once that's set, it's set in stone.
Right, that's right.
And it cannot be changed.
Right, I mean, not, not substantively.
Yeah.
Again, I mean, there are specific provisions. So, for example, maybe there are provisions about exactly where to put certain types of structures and that sort of thing. Generally, they're to make...
A farmstead area specifically identified.
Right, right. And generally, they're to provide a certain amount of flexibility within parameters they're establishing in the agreement, and to provide that the grantee is able to then, sort of to properly monitor what's going on, to make sure that the values that they originally, you know, we're trying to protect are being protected, whatever that is, whether it's scenic agricultural land or wetlands or whatever.
Okay. And lastly, the last piece of correspondence, I don't remember whether this has been copied to you or not. It's from Richard Rang regarding, I'm sorry, it is from Bridget Barclay to Richard Rang regarding the Hoffman Residential Development. Dear Mr. Rang, you requested that the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority provide you a letter regarding our intent to assume ownership and management responsibility for the water and sewer systems of the proposed Hoffman Residential Development project in the town of Red Hook. As you know, there has been ongoing discussions with representatives of the town, the village of Red Hook, and the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority regarding the water supply source for the Hoffman project, the ownership of the onsite water system improvements to be constructed, and the ownership of the onsite sewer system improvements to be constructed. Should the town board determine that it desires the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater to assume ownership of the onsite and sewer systems, the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater is prepared to do so. Upon receiving such a request from the town board, it would be the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater's intent to request that the Dutchess County Legislature take the steps necessary to establish a zone of assessment in the county water district and a part county sewer district for the authority to enter into an agreement with Kerchhoff Properties and/or the property owner to assume ownership of the onsite water and sewer systems. And that was drafted by Bridget Barclay on September 29th and sent to Richard Rang.
And do we have, I don't think we have a specific request from the developer yet to ask the town to do that, right?
No, I don't think we do. I think it's...
So, premature to take that step?
Yeah, I think we, we need to be, you know, they need to decide what they, what they prefer to do.
If they want to propose.
Yeah.
If we're going to give a session, this is what you have.
But it's a good, you know, this is, this is a step that is necessary for them to know, and the county has made it clear, so we're all glad to have that.
And that's consistent with their typical process, which is to ask you to invite them to begin the process. Right.
And, has anyone anything else?
I thought you said you, we didn't have to sign anything about the, the Feller transfer?
No, no, we do not. It's for information.
Even though it says to sign it?
I thought we already did that. You know, we went through this before.
We did, well, no, I wasn't too sure before.
Well, we have the letter dated September 30th. It says to sign.
Yeah.
It's all technical stuff, though. There's no way the town书记's going to buy it. Yeah. Scenic Hudson only recommended it, so.
I'm not going to have to do that at this point. We can make a, have a resolution in October. I'm going to, I haven't gotten a formal letter from Scenic Hudson asking us to do that, so I would let, I would ask our, I mean, they're, they're the grantee, so I'm not going to look for them to do that first unless something came through that I didn't see from them.
Well, this letter from Bauer, I guess it's to both of us, right? To the town and to Scenic Hudson, asks for a signature?
Yeah, but we're not going to sign that. Okay. I'm, I'm looking for Scenic Hudson to give us a request to do that if we're going to do it.
So, they should take the lead.
They need to take the lead because they're the grantee, right? So...
Okay, so, now we're at public comment again. Is there any? Yes.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Do you, by any chance, have an extra copy of that letter about Montgomery Place? Or no?
Well, by any chance, I might have, but I don't have it at this moment. I can get it to you there.
Yeah, because I may want to look into that.
I bet you would, okay.
And the truck that you're auctioning off, is that the truck that you were originally thinking about replacing? Or was that a different, was that a different truck? There was one that you said...
No, it's the truck we're replacing.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Is that it, Hank?
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
No other questions? Is there a motion to?
Well, I have a couple of...
Oh, well, do come forward, my man.
All right. By the way, we had a busy week last week with a couple of committees, but the ZRC and the Agribusiness Space Committee met last week in a joint session. So, the ZRC has proposed language to present to the town board to amend the zoning law with respect to agricultural offenses, which we discussed before. So, I was going to provide a copy to all the board members tonight of their language, and then bring it up at the next meeting next week with Jim's here. So, there's a little bit of a discussion about the definition of agricultural offenses, but we can discuss that, I think, next week.
Okay.
But it's written in notes, you know, what has been a further amendment to this. And there are a couple of appointments that have come up to our committees. Do we deal with that next week also?
We can, or you can suggest who they might be and...
Well, Michael Robertson wants to be the community at large representative on the ZRC.
And Michael is a farmer?
Yes.
Yes.
He's the one with the farm, yeah.
Yeah, he's very active with the Agribusiness Space people. Ken Bigley, the rally, had replaced him on the ZRC as a liaison with the Agribusiness Space, but he wants to be on there as a community at large. And Sarah Imboden has asked to be on the intermunicipal task force, so as a CAC representative, so we want to recommend that.
All right, so, do they both have letters, Bill, of interest to you? Or this is...
I think they were both asked to send letters to.
Okay, okay. So, if, if Sue has them in hand by the next meeting...
It was only last Thursday.
Yeah. Well, she'll need them in hand before we can, we can vote on it.
Yeah, I think we've explained that, too.
But that's good.
So, we'll bring this up next week.
Okay, we will, we will certainly put it on the agenda if we have the letter of interest in hand.
And the fire contracts, you want to discuss that in executive session?
Yes, we should, right.
Whenever you want.
Yep, yep, we'll do that. Actually, it'll be an attorney-client, and if we're finished, are we finished with business tonight? Is there a motion to go into attorney-client?
So, move.
For the first, purpose of discussing two, three contracts, actually. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll close when we come out.